All right, well, let's get started. We've got a lot of stuff to go on going on here tonight. Welcome to the 4pm joint work session of September 2nd, 2025. Please note that all council members will be present. We have Councilmember Richie, I think, is online. If you can just give us a shout. Is that a thumbs up, maybe?
I'm here, sorry, I couldn't hear you for a second.
All right, and then Councilmember Blair will be joining us shortly, so. With that, we have a few things on our agenda for tonight. Let's quick look over that if there's anything we need to talk about or want to talk about.
I think we mentioned that we may want to take one item out of the budget amendment possibly. And we're gonna get some language for that, just in case the. Perfect, thank you, just in case.
All right, that's pretty much on on our agenda. We will, we also have. Yeah, that's it. We have a closed session that will occur today in our work session meeting. So we will have to go into our meeting and do a closed session from there. But that's only after we are done with talking about. Gosh, Title VIII, how big is that chapter going to be by the time we're done? But, yeah, good point. Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's get started. Jared, or whomever, Brian, I don't know, either one of you?
All right, Chair White, thank you. So, yeah, fun, exciting continuation of discussion on Title VIII. And I do like your question, how big is that chapter? It's not overly that large, actually. It's just a, an exciting yet complicated topic. It's been a lot of years in the making, so. Kind of without further ado, I am not going to be doing a ton of the presentation tonight. I'm going to be turning it over to Brian. And then online, we also have Ryan Kurt and Margaret. Also that will have some input and some discussion as we go along, so.
Okay, great.
This chair is a lot more comfortable after three times in front of you guys, so.
I just wait.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Too late. We started the process of the Title VIII recommendations for revisions. Then we decided to break it up one at a time. Once we saw the confusion all over the minimum standards, the first time, we we thought we'd just separate it out. So today, we're going to talk about leasing policy and Title VIII and. We're going to start again with the overview of airport operations for ordinance and policy. So the airport, the city has an agreement with the FAA to run the city according to FAA standards. Were included in the National Planet of Integrated Airport Systems. So a pilot could depart from Ogden. And whichever airport they fly in the country will have the same airfield dimensions, the same lights, the same radio communications, that's part of that system. So included in that is ordinance, they give us their rules and regulations. So we're compliant with the federal requirements. And then policy, they also dictate some of the policy. And in return, they give us lots of money for capital improvements and terminal improvements. And they help us operate the airport, usually at a ninety to ninety-five percent rate on capital improvements. So this relationship is very important. Then we have the city attorney's office that helps distinguish between the local state codes and then our aviation advisors who help us better understand how the grant assurances, our obligations comply with the ordinance and policy.
Can I ask you a question? I've asked this before, but never of you and maybe, but I've never really had a concrete answer. FAA has policies, they also have best practices or suggestions or whatever. And how do we distinguish between those two? And how closely do we adhere to their recommendations, their recommended policies?
They have advisory circulars. I'm sure Kurt and Ryan Margaret could go into more detail. But but high level, they have advisory circulars depending on your airport. So we're a primary non-hub airport. So they'll have regulations for us that are different than Salt Lake or different than a general aviation airport. And that's why we have the aviation experts to say for your size of airport, your class, do you want to operate 24 hours a day? Well, here's here's the standards. Then each airport comes up with their proposed operations in an airport certification manual that we send to the FAA. This is how we would like to comply with your regulations. And so they look at that and come out every year to make sure we are following our procedures for compliance with federal obligations.
Okay. I'll probably ask more questions like that as we go along, but thank you.
Yeah. So in operating the airport, we have the shared responsibility between the two branches of government. City Council approves the master plan and the direction that they want the airport to go. They establish the legal framework for operating the airport. They adopt ordinance consistent with FAA grants and also state. The state has some House bills that have come out with regards to zoning around airports. So we would make sure we're compliant with that. Then provide budgetary oversight and controls of the budget or recommended rates, fees and charges for services come through the city council. The mayor develops the airport strategic plan from the ordinances, from the airport master plan, and then creates the details in the policy to comply with the ordinance and also with our FAA grants assurances. So we have two two cracks at the apple there with our aviation legal counsel and city council to make sure everything is in alignment. So the proposed lease outline path, the city code will include ordinance level requirements at very high levels. And the administrative policy will address the details and the processes. So what we're recommending is to take the details and the processes out of Title VIII and put them in Title XI. And then have aviation consultants and legal counsel draft the ordinance level requirements that will protect the city and the FAA and allow the airport to operate through policy. Any questions on this? So Margaret Martin's our aviation legal counsel. And she has reviewed Title VIII and broken out each section. So these are the four sections we're going to cover today in Title VIII that relate to the leases that are generally in Title VIII. So currently in Title VIII dash three dash three, it has these policies permits, types of general leases, mandatory provisions. I mean, you can read this, this is what's in Title VIII. And the recommendation is most of this should be moved to policy. So a general statement, and this is a general statement that I came up with. It would be run through the city attorney's office and Margaret to make sure it's compliant with all of our obligations. The purpose is to establish a uniform and transparent operation of the airport. And the details that are now in Section A would be moved to Title XI. Proposals and permits, this is how you apply for a permit to lease land. And that should, I recommend, goes to policy. It's not at ordinance level, it's a procedural level. So that entire section B, we're recommending to remove to Title XI. Types of leases.
So Brian, I have a question, so permits, does that, that doesn't have any financial obligation, it's just. Promposal, proposal.
The process for applying for a permit, like through the city building, there's fees associated with that, that would be contained in the consolidated fee schedule. But what's the process? Here's the information you need, then you get the permit and including the fees.
And those fees are unified or the consolidated, okay, that's what I said.
Going to be, hopefully.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes. So this is the process, the proposal and process. And move that to, now, we can read it, but you don't want to do that on your own. Types of leases, again, this is general. We want to keep the general types of leases that are authorized by the city council. Private, commercial, government leases, aeronautical, non-aeronautical. So that would be a broad statement. But then the detail would be moved to Title XI. Oh, if you have a private lease, this is the condition, or a commercial lease or a government lease. A lot of government leases will not comply with our codes or regulations. So we have to have a place to say, yeah, we're going to accept Forest Service to come in here and operate helicopters. And we're going to accept their lease template or the FAA and their new tower. They're going to build us a new twenty million dollar tower. And they have their lease stipulations that they get to pay a dollar a year for 20 years. That's a pretty good return, but that doesn't comply with our rates and standards. So we would break out the detail in Title XI. Mandatory provisions, this is where the legal counsel would come in. These are the mandatory provisions. In ordinance, if you're going to operate a business at the airport, you need to support the airport with a permit. But then the detail, what type of business, flight school, fixed base operator, repair shop, paint shop, that detail would then be moved to Title XI. So just again, the general would stay in. We're going to welcome all types of businesses compliant with FAA grant assurances. And then the policy would also have mandatory provisions. You're going to be a flight school, here are the insurance requirements. Here are the hours, all of the specific details for that individual commercial operator. Aeronautical activities, that is, falls right in line with policy. So it's very, very detailed and belongs to be moved in policy, what type of activities. The commercial aeronautical activities permit that would initially be moved into the mandatory provisions. If you're going to have a commercial operation, you're going to pay that permit. But those fees would be in the consolidated fee schedule. And then the process to obtain that permit would be in Title XI. So this one section here would actually get moved to three different appropriate locations. And then processing, move that entire section. Again, that's process, not ordinance, it's a policy, move that to Title XI. So that's the first one, so we're twenty-five percent the way through. Any questions? How to process an application? And the difference between them? The next section is cost responsibilities. So the costs. Tenants are obligated to pay taxes, utility, building maintenance and pavement maintenance. That's the current code. And as these are all costs, we would have a reference, again, stay in Title VIII. Tenants, leaseholders are responsible for the costs as found in Title XI. Which would be, hey, you're required to pay taxes and utilities and building maintenance and pavement maintenance. But again, the stipulation on a large hangar that has fifty percent pavement in front of it would have a different operation than a small hangar with the same different obligations. Current lease rate, so this is the current lease rate for ground leases and facility leases. So this is a detailed chart. If you have unimproved or improved land, then that goes into this section here. Same thing for a facility. Now, a facility lease is owned by the city. So the restaurant would be a facility lease. Or some of the hangers that we have out there would be a facility lease. So they're not a ground lease, so we want to identify different requirements for facility leases. But this again is process. So we would have, again, a reference in Title VIII legally obligating a tenant to comply with Title XI. But both sections, the ground lease and facility leases would move to Title XI. The detail would move to Title XI. There are too many leases to put in ordinance. We have a medical facility off airport, non-aeronautical, ground leases, facility leases. So all that detail would be moved to the policy.
Can I ask a question about that? So I understand the need to, and I'm not sure I care whether it's in Title XI or Title VIII. But but as far as ground leases and things go, I think that has been a bit of a sticking point in years past that we weren't doing it the way people liked it. We, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, so my question, I think, is getting to the point where how do we manage leases in a way that protects the city's fiscal issues? You know, I mean, if people are just leasing ground, there's got to be some kind of a standard by what, you know, their responsibility to keep the building in in a condition that is to a standard, whatever, whatever standard we we say it is. And there's got to be also sometime, I mean, leases really, in my mind, they're not really a lease if they're entitled in perpetuity.
Correct.
You know, so there's got to be something, and I don't know how you're, how you're going to manage that, say, okay, well, this will in in ten years, you're not going to get this renewed because we're going to re, you know, we're going to, going to redo this whole part of the airport or whatever reason we're going to do. How are you going to handle and manage those kind of things? I mean, because you got to do it and nobody's going to like it.
The easy answer to that is the FAA has already established general guidelines that each.
That's where, that was my first question, the guidelines, how firmly do we hang on to those guidelines? I know they've given us guidelines that have been distasteful to the to the leasees.
They give us general guidelines that the authority having jurisdiction, the city can interpret one level or another. So the the guidelines, the FAA says you cannot have a land lease longer than fifty years unless you get their permission. So up to fifty years to help the investor recover their asset. So the FAA considers any building a depreciating asset on the airport, so they recognize that. Different airports, it's fifteen years. Some airports, it's fifty years. Ogden Airport, there was a ninety-nine year lease. Well, did they follow FAA procedures for that? Yes, they got the FAA approval for that. The airport needed some funds, the FAA didn't have it, the city didn't have it. So in concession, they granted a ninety-nine year lease. So that was all done according to FAA code. Now, if the city decides to issue a ninety-year lease without FAA approval, the FAA would just withhold their funding until we complied with their assurances. There's also five different options that are available and acceptable in the FAA documents for the termination of a lease, lease revision is one of them.
So some, you know, if I was a leaseholder and, you know, I'm wanting to keep my building up, I'm investing in the building, I'm fixing the roof, I'm putting on a new door or something, whatever it's taking to to keep the thing nice. But I just, let's say I just spent thirty thousand dollars this year and you tell me next year I can't renew my lease. I mean, how how long are we going to give people notice that they're not going to get a renewal? So that they don't spend the, you know, don't don't blow a bunch of money that's not going to be recouped.
That that would come in the actual lease policy. So we're going to set the general terms, we're going to comply with the FAA grant assurances on leases. That will be in the ordinance, then the policy will get taken out and created from there. So right now, a lot of the policy is in ordinance. So if I wanted to offer a improved rent as an option at the end of the lease, I wouldn't have that ability because it's not offered in ordinance right now. But if the ordinance says, hey, you will, you will have the ability to offer anything that's acceptable to the FAA, so we stay in compliance, then all those other four options become available in a leasing policy. then all those other four options become available in a leasing policy. And once we create that leasing policy, our intent is to issue that or offer that to the current tenants. They like their current lease, they can have it till the expiration of the lease. If they like the new terms. Again, the new terms for a private hangar, are they going to be different than a commercial operator or a government operator? These government operators like the tower, we want to keep happy. So they're going to have different terms. So we have worked closely for a long time with the tenants on the lease policy issue. And right now, we just have a skeleton of a policy. That's basically it. Ground leases and facility leases. It doesn't go into the detail.
I see. Okay, I just, I just see it as a potential sticking point and that's why I wonder how you're going to deal with it, so.
Airport tenants, they know exactly where I stand on the issue and they've been invited to the table and they've given their input.
We don't want them having pitchforks and rotten fruit, though.
No, I believe we present very well. Is that correct, Ed?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I can ask you, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, protocol here. Told you I got comfortable. We have included the tenants. They do know the grants assurances and they do know the flexibility that the city has with regards to ordinance and policy.
Okay, all right, thanks. I figured you'd see how it works out.
And I've promised them before we make any final recommendations, I will bring it up at a public airport user meeting so they have the opportunity to provide their input.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Proposed lease rates. So this is different than rates, fees and charges. This is how much we actually charge for rents of the ground. So again, a reference in the mandatory provisions, you'll pay the prevailing market rate. But that is decided annually or every five years in Title XI. We do a rates survey or study. So that rate gets set in Title XI, but the escalation clause would remain in the consolidated fee schedule. Any questions there? So the escalation clause is the last one in Title VIII regarding leases. It's the review and change and automatic adjustments in those sections. And remove Section A from Title VIII and put it in the consolidated fee schedule, which means the city council would review the changes and amounts. Then the automatic adjustments would move to Title XI for annual adjustments and corrections to our adjustments to whichever standard we set.
And is that usually in? In other airports, what, I mean, is that a percentage? Is that a?
It can be a percentage. It can be a flat percentage, three CPI plus twenty-five base points. Right now, it's just CPI. So that's another discussion we will have with the rates, fees and charges. Again, we've brought this up with the airport users and we're well ahead of city council, but we're we're ready to move forward and give you the information that we have come up with collectively.
So to kind of dovetail with that, so if it were written such that this lease for this amount of money will increase on an annual basis at a rate of determined by the consumer price index, unless the city has need for review above and beyond CPI and then that would come back to city council. Let's say all of a sudden lease space out there is in high demand and there's room to advance some lease fees. I'm just being hypothetical here.
No, it's
If it was above and beyond CPI, then that would come back to us for review and approval.
So the FAA requires us to charge fair market value and current market. So we can't lease something twenty years ago and not have an escalation clause. So that's where the escalation clause. The airport's also able to look at it at triggering points every five years, every ten years to do a market rate adjustment.
Okay.
What has happened is the tenants didn't know that and all of a sudden they got a market rate adjustment. My opinion with little or no warning. So that's a policy that if you want the lease rate is a dollar per square foot and we're going to do a three percent annual and for the base term of your lease, ten years, it will only increase by the three percent. At ten years, the city then is able to go back and look at the market rate and adjust your lease there.
Okay, so any market adjustments would be incorporated into the language of the policy itself?
That's one, that's one option. The other option is to surprise them every year and hey, we're very popular.
No, I don't think that's a good idea.
That's an option, right. I don't think that's good. We want to promote stability and confidence. So that's one of the recommendations. That gives them confidence. They know for ten years, the most will be as a three percent raise. I have seen in forty years, the lease rates go down twice when CPI went negative. Nobody remembers that because all they see is the thirty-eight years of increases. Recently, last five years, rent increased eight percent in one year because CPI.
Right. So at what point would any of those lease fees come back to council for review? If you've got a lease written in such a way that it's a cost of living adjustment and then various trigger points for market evaluation, is there a circumstance where it would come back to council? That's what I'm kind of getting at, Brian. Is under what circumstances would we review this after it was moved out of Title VIII and into XI?
So we approve, it's not a dollar, it's forty cents a foot. We approve forty cents a foot with the escalation clause. The next year, it's automatic. So it's going to be forty-four cents. But let's say the third year, we do a market analysis and now the land is worth sixty cents. All of those leases that were signed before that still get the forty-four cents. But anybody new coming in would now pay that fair market value of sixty cents with the same escalation clause. That's how we would keep it consistent. So the rates could change. This is the rate for this year. Here's your escalation. Three percent if we want to be real simple or the CPI adjustment.
Okay, so it sounded like all that stays within the administrative side of the ledger. There's nothing regarding fee lease rates that would come back to council? Am I off the mark here? I don't, I'm trying to, I'm understanding that you say that this gets captured in policy.
Correct.
But if there were a change to fees, it would come back to us. I'm trying to get to where it would come back to us. Can you give me an example of that?
For the land rents, how much we're charging for the land.
Okay.
Yeah, that is a federal obligation to charge market rate. So what that is, is determined by how, whatever method we choose. So there could be a notice, hey, this is the new market rate. But usually it's just automatic or hey, we've done a market rate adjustment, city council, here's the new market rate. You guys accept this as your new lease standard. Then we move forward from there.
I was going to say that's
How do we do it now?
That's kind of what we do now anyways.
Yeah, I was going to say like, I don't remember, yeah.
Our finance people figure it all out. They come tell us what they think the numbers are and we say, yep, it looks like what the numbers are. So we don't, none of our people are doing these finance analysis anyway. You know, on the council.
No, I get that.
So you're not, you're not really proposing a new way of doing it. You're just
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 Tracking. It's going to be tracked differently.
Yeah.
And all these fees will be tracked annually. That helps us with the cost centers of the airport.
The thing that I think is important in this, I mean, historically, we've always charged less than market rate a little bit for the land with this idea that, you know, we're going to end up with this thing at some point. This hangar is going to revert. I kind of think that was the intent a hundred years ago when we started. And we didn't for a long time, even if we could have done. And then when we started to try to think, well, we are going to do that, that was when it kind of blew up on us. But so I guess my thinking now, as it's been, as I've thought about this a little bit, I think we do need to charge market rate and that way the taxpayer isn't supplementing somebody that maybe doesn't even live in Ogden. You know, and especially since these leases are likely to go on further until something triggers them to revert. So that's kind of my thinking. I don't know if that's the same thinking that you all are thinking or not, but.
Brian, may I?
Yes.
Historically, when the buildings were initially built, airports would charge, I'll call it a brownfield rent since the land at that point probably was underdeveloped or not developed or improved. And so typically an airport would give a then comparable brownfield rent to the developer to develop on. And when those buildings then revert, you would have an improved land value that the airport would consider for a land rent moving forward. And we like to use the word comparable rent versus fair market. Fair market, the FAA's requirements for a fair market rental adjustment apply to non-aeronautical land where you have to achieve fair market rental value. But for aeronautical land, the guidance from the FAA is that you charge a comparable rent to like airports to Ogden. And so as Brian mentioned, in your consolidated fee schedule, you would have more than likely a comparable rent survey that was completed for a peer set of airports to Ogden to come up with then an annual value for what the land rent would be. And the proposed leasing policy that will come forward to you in the future will consider opportunities and discretion for the city and the airport to have both unimproved land, improved land rent values and opportunities if you were to give an extension to somebody in an already, let's call it an expiring lease for an extended time, that their rent wouldn't be the continued, I'll call it unimproved value, but a new improved value of the land that would move forward for that continued leased asset.
It gets complicated, but if we do that annual review and it goes through the consolidated fee schedule, whatever we decide for an escalation rate and then the triggers at ten or how many ever years for a market rate for current leaseholders, that at least lets them know and have a plan for the next ten years, my lease won't be more than this plus three percent a year. That instills confidence in investors and in local pilots while also still is compliant with FAA assurances to charge the fair market rate. Any other questions on that one?
What's our current fee schedule review? Is it in ordinance or nail? Do you know, Jenny?
Yeah, it's in ordinance.
And it's annual? An annual?
We just update it periodically, right?
It's part of the escalation. I think it's a set rate of then the ordinance.
Say that again.
Sorry, I can't hold something and talk at the same time. Escalation clause, there is, every January, there is an increase to those, the rents.
And how often does the council look at our fee schedule?
When the schedule has changed other than this escalation, we have brought it to council.
That's what I think the answer was.
And so this is the last slide.
What?
Yep. And we can go over them again if you'd like. Good. So my purpose here is to provide the city council with any other information, questions answered, help support the recommendations, the revisions to Title VIII. And chapters three and five has to do with the leases. So there's others in Title VIII like rates, fees and charges, rules and regulations that are coming in subsequent meetings, but just these two chapters, chapters three and chapter five. Draft ordinance for the city council consideration. That'll come through city legal with airport consultants and myself and Kurt and Brian. And then once the ordinance is adopted, then the airport lease policy, the detail will be created from the ordinance for consideration and adoption by the mayor. That's the path forward. And I believe on our schedule, it's before October thirty-first to have this presented to you, so.
Do you know how far along they are on the ordinance?
I don't. Let's see if we can move it out first.
I have a question, Brian. Some of the less slightly things about the airport are the lack of care for some of the hangers. In the minimum requirements and in some of these lease agreements, is there any wording that would require the owners or lease owners of these hangers to do any improvements to their properties?
Yes, it's already in there.
And has it been in there in the past and it just hasn't been, just hasn't been enforced or?
Probably. I don't, I wasn't here. It wasn't enforced to my standard. How about that? It may have been enforced to somebody else's standard, so I can't say that it wasn't. But it does say no rust, paint chips, pavement maintenance. You have to have a permit if you're going to build an interior structure. So these are some of the issues that we're addressing. We can't do them all at once. It just took thirty years to create and so we're doing it one step at a time and separating out the lease policy. Minimum standards, rules and regulations into the appropriate level. Yes, the standard of the airport is a well-kept vegetation-controlled airfield that we are moving towards. And I've made that a public statement at the airport user meeting. We just don't know what that looks like yet, but yes, we will clean that. Appearance of all the hangers, taxiways, weeds will be cleaned up.
Do you feel like you've seen some effort to improve the hangar since you've made progress that you've made up to this point or is that something yet to come?
There's several tenants that already have kept their facilities nice. And so we appreciate them. We want to reward them. There's forty-four of them that are waiting for the final lease documents. So before they invest any money in their hangar, if they're just going to walk away or tear it down, then I wouldn't require them to invest money to fix it up. I think I am a government employee, but at least I don't intentionally waste other people's money, so. They have that option to remove their hangar, so I wouldn't require them to fix it up. But once we get this lease policy and we can offer them the option, hey, you got ten more years on this, whatever it is, I'm not promising anything. Five years, ten years. Now, here's the conditions that you have to paint the facility. You have to get rid of the rust. The doors have to work. The pavement has to be maintained. You accept that? Good. Here's ten years to recover that cost and make the airport aesthetically pleasing like the city requires of all the businesses down here.
Brian, how often do you actually get in and inspect these hangers to make sure that they're they have an airplane and they're not a man cave and that they're not just a storage unit for whatever else? How often do you get to verify those things?
We go in once a year for inspection. This goes back to all the primary guiding documents and one of them is definitions. So we've talked about the definition, what is a based aircraft? Because you have to have a based aircraft in your hangar. So the FAA has a based aircraft registry. Also, the state of Utah does. But we're finding, no one's defined that, so we have one aircraft based in four different hangers. Like, wait a minute, how is this happening? What's in the other three hangers when this plane moves around? Like, wait a minute, how's this, how how's this happening? What what's in the other three hangars when this plane moves around? So those are the the rules and regulations that are three chapters down from here that we're gonna address that way. Hey, we want active aircraft. There's some aircraft on the ramp that haven't moved in years. So if it's an inactive aircraft, that's really not benefiting aviation, so what is our rules and regulations for that? So that's still lease policy, maybe rates, fees and charges, and then rules and regulations, and then definitions last to make sure we've got everything correct and hopefully we're done first quarter of next year. Okay. We had some pictures of some pretty nice man caves out there before though. Yeah.
So just to, I I just trying to set some sense some expectations from your side to our side.
Yes.
You know, we'll we'll need some time to look at a new ordinance.
Yep.
I mean, like, you can't give it to us and hope that it'll be on the the agenda like the following week. We also need some time, I think, is we have to do public hearing on a new ordinance? No, no public hearing on a but at least a few weeks to read a new ordinance, so.
Yeah, it is. There is a space on the agenda for next week in the work session, however, I'm guessing that we won't have this ordinance language in time for that, so unless there's more you want to talk about with this information, I don't know that we'll have a lot to talk about next week.
No, I I think the ordinance is probably where we're looking at this one, we we probably need two or three weeks to review, so just giving you some expectations from our side. If not four. I'm helping you out, Glenn. All right.
And we, you know, we actually asked for a couple of items the last time we approved one for the next revision, so hopefully they're getting worked in and. Okay, so I'll work with Margaret and Gary and Glenn on draft ordinance. And then our next stakeholder meeting on the actual policy, now that we've we're on a path moving forward, is the twenty-sixth of this month, so that's three weeks, two weeks away. So, yeah, we're we're in line to give city council time to look at the ordinance and even the draft lease policy. Once, once we get there.
Great. All right, thanks. Any other questions for Brian? There may be some as we think through it this week, but we'll get back to you. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the, an administrative update about from the RDA. And I'm not sure, Jared?
All right, Chair White, members of council, thank you. I'm gonna go through quite a few different projects in here, some of them at a pretty high level, so please interject with any questions or any comments that you have. If there's something I'm not covering, please let me know, I'll be happy to to talk about it. So in the RDA, what's going on? Well, there's a lot of different things going on in there and a lot of different areas that are taking place. One of the things that we've talked about in previous meetings that you're aware of is the updating of the RDA mission and and goals, the values. We just completed a transmittal that we're getting to ready to route through to bring that back to the RDA board for consideration, for review and consideration, possible adoption, so that is moving forward. And will be coming shortly, hopefully. Another thing that we're working on, that's kind of the cover page that you see on it, but it's kind of the annual report. If you recall, last year, we didn't get it all the way, an annual summary all the way done because we were building out that dashboard, hoping to get that in play. That is being worked on. We got to integrate it now into the city system, but as a, on a side note, I've also put together kind of a little annual summary that's close, it's very similar to some of the documents that you've seen in the past. And we're probably a week, maybe two weeks away. This is just a draft, but having this, getting this out, disseminating this over to you. And then on that dashboard, like I said, it's still in progress. It's taken a little bit longer than we anticipated or we're hoping that it would take, but it pretty much is built and we just got it now integrated into the city system. And that is, you can be active with it, scrolling through the different project areas and and the different things that are taking place, so we're looking forward to showing that to you here pretty soon and getting that posted and getting it put up. Another thing that we have been working on is a policy that we're preparing that we'd like to bring before the RDA board, talking about our housing funds. So as you're familiar with, in most of all the RDA project areas, they have a certain amount of money that is set aside. That money is set aside specifically, it has to go to housing, depending on the year and the type of project area it was and what state law was in effect at the time, those monies have different requirements to them. So way back in the day, when RDAs had to collect all this money, all of it went to the Olean Walker Housing Trust Fund to the state. You just automatically, you sent it in and then they allocated the funds from there. That has changed over time, where the city could elect to send them over there, or the city could hold them and then set them aside. That fund balance has typically always operated in the negative. But currently, as of right now, it does have a cash balance in it. And so we're trying to, we want to put together a policy for you to review on what does that look like, what's eligible, what would be the method of going through for somebody to make a request to use it, so. All of those have different rules in the sense that it could be from sixty percent AMI to eighty percent AMI. Some of our current project areas that we have right now, like the airport CRA, some of the brand new ones, you can actually go up to a hundred and twenty percent, which is a pretty big jump from some of the previous ones. And we've got all of them. Thank you to Lisa and her team that track all of that for us. But we we do have all of those, and so because there is a cash balance and we have had some requests from some groups about how could they be eligible for some of those funds, we're putting together a policy to present to you what that might look like. On the RDA staff update, I just wanted to throw this in there and let you know, we just, we did interviews, first round interviews last Friday for the RDA coordinator position. So we're right in the middle of that, hoping to get that one moved on or move forward with that pretty quickly.
What what will be on your RDA dashboard? I'm asking for a friend.
Yeah, so it'll be interactive. It'll be interactive in the sense that it'll have all the different project areas. You can go in there, you can see what the taxable value was at the time, what it currently is, what the escalation has been over time, what the projects are that have been in that area. Be able to click through that and see and go through all of that information.
Great, thanks.
Just some of the priority project activities that have been taking place right now, you're well aware of the Malachite development, that you approved participation in agreement a little while ago, we're finalizing, trying to get everything finalized up with that group to get that moving forward. They're antsy, as are we, to kind of get that one moving forward. Out in the airport CRA, the Williams International Expansion, if you've driven out there lately, they are currently starting to go vertical, which is exciting on that big expansion that we participated in. We've been meeting with quite a few companies lately, some site selectors about other potential opportunities. We actually currently have an offer on a piece of property up on on nineteen hundred West, that's unincorporated county, right now it's in Weber County. That offer includes annexing it into Ogden City and doing a development on that, so we're working through that process right now. And hopefully we can gain some traction on that one, it's kind of exciting.
Was that the piece of property that Roy was interested in annexing?
It is.
Okay.
Yep. That they would need your approval on. Or anyway, it's exciting. I've been talking with the property owners and the potential buyers and as of right now, it looks like it's got a good path forward. There's some questions we're still trying to vet through. What does the annexation process look like? It's the buyers asking some of those questions, so I'm helping walking, I'm walking them through that process. And then the current owner has had some questions too about some possibilities for him, if things, you know, if they didn't work out, what does that mean? And so we're trying to get all of those questions answered. In the Ogden River area, this says Lotus, that should be Eighteenth and Wall, that was a project that, if you recall, was a large fire recently, unfortunately. But I did want to go through and provide a clarification on this. That project was got a little complicated at the end, and if you recall, and rightly so, there were a few things that got hurried at the end, but I would argue that they were hurried in favor of the city. And so there recently was a article that was put out in the Standard Examiner about this that had some questions in it, and I want to go through and try to answer some of those questions about kind of what happened. So the concern was is the city didn't get fair market value for our property and didn't get fair justification to our residents. That is not the case. It alleged that there was no appraisals done, there were appraisals on both of those properties. So when I got involved in this, there was already agreements that were being put in place that were prior, that preceded me, that the agreements were going through to just exchange property straight across with no equivalency terms in it whatsoever. So that agreement was renegotiated in the sense that when the properties were exchanged, there were appraisals done on both, there was a five hundred thousand dollar difference between the two appraisals. In the land exchange agreement and in the development agreement, the developer had to pay four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the city, which left an eighty thousand dollar difference between those two. The developer was also responsible to go through and put a bunch of the Riverwalk improvements, the trail, that's gonna be a public trail, it goes along the river. They're having to do that at their cost. There also was a water feature that's in that area that is tied into the storm drain system, that they have to redirect the storm drain as that, the public storm drain is that comes through their site and activate that water feature back in there. They did not get the full entirety of the four acres that it was mentioned in there, they actually ended up with about three point two acres, we got two point four five. And then the other question that was in there that we kind of gave them an open checkbook for environmental cleanup, and that was not the case. When you approve that as a council, the clause that was in that contract said in in the appraisal, it was denoted that there was an environmental contaminants on the city-owned property, and we were aware of that. We got two different environmental companies that came out and gave us different quotes on it, we took the lesser of the two. And we did devalue that appraisal, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to equate for that environmental cleanup that we were responsible for either way. And then it, the question was is that if they extended over that three hundred and sixty thousand, that they could then come back and ask for, well, that we would just pay them additional money to get it through. That is actually not what it says. It says that if they exceeded the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that they could come back and request that of the council. But it also required a FIS to be created that would start to generate increment that that would then be taken from. So there were steps and balances that it had to go through. It was not just an open-ended deal that went through. And then if you recall, I know it's not a ton of them, but the other requirement that we threw on there at the end was that they had to have their six townhomes that will be for sale, that will front onto Lincoln Avenue, and so it's not purely just one hundred percent apartments. So I just wanted to share some of that, if there were, I've gotten a few questions on that, so I just wanted to talk about some of that, if there were any additional questions.
Remind me what a FIS is?
FIS is the first, yeah, the first time homeowner and it's residential, it's like, it's a, it's oh my gosh, I cannot believe I can't remember that acronym, I use it all the time. It's an investment, first time home buyers, yeah.
First time home buyers, okay. Yeah, so now it's just an acronym. I get that. And we also got a park out of this, it's in a more favorable location than was initially planned, correct? It's moving interior of that block rather than being.
The park kind of went linear from High Adventure Park where it is now, went across Lincoln and then went all the way out to Wall Avenue. So instead of putting it over there, we rearranged the park so that it came directly south of the river from High Adventure Park and continued right through there. And I don't necessarily have that one on here, but that's another one I've been working on. I have been in contact with the Twentieth Street Investment Group. So that area through there is a checkerboard of ownership, it's really quite interesting. The city owns a piece and then they'll own two lots and then we'll own a lot, and it just kind of bounces back and forth throughout there. And then there's also, the city actually also has a lien against every single one of their properties, and that was from all the demo costs from when this was created years ago. So the current ownership has no desire to want to develop it out or continue to do any kind of progress in there. There used to be multiple owners that consolidated down to one within what they described to me as a bunch of lawsuits between themselves, not against us, but between all the ownership group internally. They don't want to develop it, they would rather sell that. I have talked to three different development companies that have reached out asking questions about that property. And we'll continue to have those discussions as well.
Can you identify the location of that property you just referenced for me? I missed it.
Yeah, so that's that's the Ogden Band, so that's like from Lincoln to Grant, and then there is a a section even from Grant over to Washington, and then that would be Park up to, wouldn't quite go to Eighteenth Street, it would be south of like the High Adventure.
Okay.
But it's kind of that landmass right through there.
In the middle, okay.
So, yeah, I didn't really have that one on here, but that that one's been pretty active as of late, too.
I just wanted to clarify, that was a letter to the editor, right, rather than a newspaper article? Just want to make sure I didn't miss another one.
Oh, no, yeah, you're right. It was a guest, a guest opinion, yeah.
And then did you miss the, we may need to expand the CRA boundaries to include Hinckley, Midland and nineteen hundred?
Oh, yeah, I did kind of go past that. So thank you, that, so on that piece on nineteen hundred West, if we were to incorporate that, if that did get annexed into Ogden City, we could potentially be looking at doing a a boundary, a CRA boundary adjustment. So we couldn't include it when we, we would have, we would love to have included that, but it was not part of the city.
Right.
So on the original, when we did that boundary area, we couldn't include it. It's not in Ogden City.
Okay, thanks for.
Came, yeah, and if it became part of Ogden City, though, we we would likely request to adjust the boundary, no budget changes, but we would probably just adjust the boundary or request it anyway. The Parkway Group, this is the one right here on Washington Boulevard where the Piccadilly Building used to be, the kind of the rodeo headquarters building used to be right there. That one's been really active. We're excited kind of about the proposal that they've brought to us, introducing that new middle income housing fund. That was kind of new to all of us, so we've been kind of learning and going through that, but that's a they've asked to be able to include that into their project, and so that's, that's actually a nice addition to go through there, that allows them instead of being capped at sixty or eighty percent of AMI, allows them to go up to the hundred and twenty percent. Trackline CRA, I just want to touch on this one, the Exchange Building, we're still working heavy on this one. This has been a very challenging project. So again, this is one, we've had this for a long time, I I want to say that we acquired that in approximately twenty thirteen, it actually might have been before that. And it's been on the city books for quite a while, and we're trying to find a path forward for that. So we, we did an RFP, as you recall, we got one response back on that RFP. In that RFP, we weren't able to meet the obligations that they were requesting. So that was leaning heavy on TIF incentives. There are really no TIF incentives to give out on that, so when that project area was created and that development was done now down there, the the debt and the loan service that we took up to fund that, the tax increment, the TIF that was created off these projects is the funding mechanism to pay that back, so it's all encumbered. So we really don't have any additional TIF in that area that we could apply towards this building in a traditional RDA. But we've been going through trying to find a path forward. We, our initial budget that we got back on a refurbishment of that building came in at sixteen million dollars. We potentially, there are suitors that are looking, would be interested in it, but that cost just exceeded what they really can afford. Uh, so we're trying to figure out a mechanism of what that might look like and how we can do that. We've engaged the private sector as well for help. We're looking at preservation tax credits. We're looking at, at different things. We're talking to different, um, development companies about ideas and things that they can have. Trying to figure out what that looks like. We're getting a second opinion right now. And that second opinion right now looks like it's going to come in at approximately about two and a half million dollars lower than the original proposal. But it's still a pretty substantial, pretty substantial, uh, gap.
What, what are we currently paying to maintain and to secure it? That kind of thing?
Oh, great question. I don't know if I know that off the top of my head. So we do have a contract with, that our abatement company that does a bunch of stuff throughout the city for us. Uh, they keep a close, well, we keep a close on it, but I, but so do they. They go in as needed and board it back up, which it needs again. Somebody just got in there, knocked all the top boards out. But, um, yeah, I, I'd have to go back and, and look at that to see what those numbers are coming in at.
I, I just ask myself the question and maybe I just got to ask it out loud. When do we finally say, well, we're not going to get this done? We got to quit spending money.
No, that's a great question. And it's a very fair question. And I'm hoping to get those details to present to you so that, those decisions can be discussed. And what does that look like? The other thing that's taking place out there right now is it's become the home of quite the colony of bats. They're not in the building directly. It's quite interesting. So if you go out there, you have the brick facade on the exterior and then on the windows on the upstairs, uh, between the brick facade and then the inner wall, there is probably about a two inch, maybe an inch and a half gap on those windows of, it's just those things that have rotted over time. And so what they're doing is they're coming in, they're getting in that wall cavity and they are, they're numerous. I've reached out to the state, um, to talk to their individual that specializes in that area. And we're looking at ways that we could go through and non-lethally help evacuate them, uh, from the building. There are a lot of different bat species that are migratory.
Right.
So there is a chance that here within the next, you know, month or so, a lot of them might move on. We just need to make sure that we get it sealed up so that they can't, you know, get back in there. They're doing well. I will say that.
They're healthy. Yeah.
I was surprised. Yeah. But we are, we are trying to, we're exhausting all avenues of trying to figure out what that looks like. And I do look forward to coming back to the board and presenting what those findings are so that we can have that, you know, that conversation, but hopefully have it in a way that we're going to be saving it.
That would certainly be the optimal. But, but I, I think you do get to a point at some point where you know, you just, it just doesn't, the numbers don't work.
Yeah. And yeah, and it just kind of the condition of the building, right? It's been sitting like that for so many years now that it's showing it more than ever probably now. And it's getting to a state that we either need to move forward or we need to move forward. Let's just say that. Um, and so anyway, that's, yeah, I'm trying to get all of those, those answers for you so that we can have that discussion. There's a couple of other items that we're still working on. So Capital Square, we're continuing, uh, the environmental on that one. That one has kind of gotten bigger than we anticipated. Uh, we're still working with AGC, our environmental contractor and the state of Utah, um, on the VCP, which is the voluntary compliance program. We're having to go through and do some injections, uh, into the ground for some of the different chemicals that were left behind by that dry cleaner. That's being monitored to see if that plume is spreading at all and where it's going. Right now it's pretty much stayed contained. Um, and now that they're doing these injections into the ground with these other chemicals to, um, dissipate other chemicals, which is kind of interesting. We can track quickly or they, they'll be able to track how quickly that's moving. And the impact. So that one right now is still, it's hedging along. Uh, I don't know the exact timeframe on it at this point. Uh, but we are still working with that development group that has been the, the hopeful suitor of that for quite some time. They've continued to refine their design concepts on what they would do if we were to enter into an agreement with them. And what that would look like. We're running performas and all the different numbers. Trying to do those at the same time to see what happens there. Union Station Neighborhood, this one is a massive lift as you're aware. This one is taking a, a lot of, a lot of our manpower at the time, but it's a great project. Uh, we're still just working right now on putting together the capital stack, uh, finalizing master plans. What that looks like. We anticipate that we'll request that to be an HTRZ. Housing Transit Reinvestment Zone. And, um, anyway, so that one is still tracking nicely and we're trying to prep all of that together. So this is the museum plans and then the entire campus plan, what that looks like. That's with UTA, the city and Jay Fisher Companies. And then on Gibson Grove, I just wanted to touch on this. If you recall, we started down the process of creating a CRA in that area. So this is 17th and Gibson. So this would be north, northwest of, uh, Walmart that's on Wall Avenue across the river. We had started to go down a project area and create that. Uh, all of that kind of got paused and pulled back, uh, for various reasons. And so right now we're actually, we're preparing an RFP that if the RDA was to sell that property, what would somebody do with it? So we basically, we will outline what our desires would be and then let them make proposals that they could then come back and we could look at that and see, do we like any of these? Um, do any of them suit the vision and what we're hoping to accomplish over there? Or do we start over or do we go a different route? So that's, those are being prepared as also, also right now. Those on, then on a couple of other properties as well. And I think for tonight, that's all I had. There's a lot of other projects, but.
Great. Any other questions? Sure. We'll have more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, before we go, uh, any council business or board business that we needed to discuss? Anything? Just just a reminder to check your junk mail. All right. If there's no other comments or business, uh, we have, um, on agenda to go into a closed session.
Chair, make a motion that we, uh, turn into a closed session for one of the seven items listed. And since we have a rule that says we can from a work session now.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hyer, second by Councilmember Blair to go in and to move into a closed session. This is a roll call.
Councilmember Blair.
Aye.
Councilmember Chubberka. Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers. Councilmember Richie.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hyer.
Aye.
Chair White.
Aye. That passes and we'll move into a closed session and we will then adjourn from that and move into our regular session. And if we could, Brandon, if you want to make your announcement.
If you are joining us via Zoom and would like to attend the council meeting, you need to leave voluntarily now before we lock the, the webinar as we will need to keep that open for, uh, Councilmember Richie. Thank you.